Good afternoon, Mr. Clerk. Can we have the prayer?
Let the spirit of harmony and fairness prevail upon this assembly as we listen to the many voices who so enrich our common home. May our actions and wisdom and compassion contribute to the betterment of life in our city.
Please be seated. Can we have the roll call, please? Counselor Bass.
Here.
Counselor Cadman.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Ladner.
Here.
Counselor Louis.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson.
Here.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yes.
Counselor Woodsworth.
Yes.
Do you have a quorum, your worship? Thank you, Mr. Clerk. A couple of weeks ago, the city received some very sad news. George Wayburn, who was the longest-serving Park Board Commissioner, died at the age of ninety-one. To say that he was tireless is quite an understatement. He helped found or was involved in the carol ships, miniature railway in Stanley Park, lighting the trees along Beach Avenue. He received the Order of Canada in nineteen ninety-nine and was a recipient of the Freedom of the City of Vancouver in nineteen ninety-one. The Vancouver Park Board also dedicated George Wayburn Park at the foot of Richards Street, which is to open in two thousand and four. And it's tragic that he was not able to live to see his name on that park. He was involved in a number of organizations in the city: the P&amp;E, Port of Trade, Tourist Bureau, the Kits Show Boat, and the Lions Club. So, on behalf of certainly the council, I want to give our condolences to his son and to just recognize what a tremendous, tremendous contribution he made to the city. Counselor Green.
Thank you, your worship. It's a very special privilege today to welcome Staff Sergeant Karen Meng, who is going to sing for us today, and she will be accompanied by Anita Kamba. And they're going to do an aria from Vivaldi called "Nula in mundo pass cintera."
Good afternoon, everyone. This is a case of words by Enzo Vivaldi, the composer. And since I'm singing in Latin, I'll give you just a great fascination. There is no true peace in the world without bitterness, and new leaves Jesus. It is pure and rightful. Amongst anguish and torment, there's the content of soul, which can slowly go chase past.
Constable, I'll pass on your promotion to the Commissioner, but keep it secret, or I know that they'll be coming in droves to jump from Constable to Staff Sergeant. So, thank you very much. It was beautiful.
Thank you very much.
Council is required to meet in camera later this day. The reasons and authority under the Vancouver Charter are listed in the agenda. Counselor Bass, as Deputy Mayor for the month, will you move that motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that motion. I'd also like to make a comment. The composer, Vivaldi, if he was alive today, would be working in the downtown East Side. The orchestra that he conducted was from the school for wayward girls in Rome, and that was his orchestra. So, I think we should appreciate perhaps the multiple dimensions of what we have just heard. I still move the motion.
Could I have a second, please? Seconded by Counselor Stevenson. All in favor? Opposed, carried unanimously. The motion to go... Okay. The music has carried me away here. Items arising from in-camera meeting of September sixteenth: Council appointed Thomas Berger as the sole Commissioner for the City of Vancouver Commission on Electoral Reform. We have the minutes of the special council meeting, a public hearing of September tenth before us for approval. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Somebody move the adoption?
Moved.
Moved by Counselor Cadman, seconded by...
I would like to just ask a question about that. Given that we have now released the name of the Commissioner, can we also release the minutes from the meeting?
Mr. Clerk? The minutes relative to that item could be released yet. They're matters now public? Thank you. That would show that you were opposed, and Counselor Ladner was for. Any other corrections? May we have somebody move the adoption? So, it's Counselor Cadman. You moved, seconded, Counselor Louis. All those in favor, opposed, carried unanimously. Minutes two are the minutes of the regular council meeting following the City Services and Budgets Meeting of September eleventh, two thousand and three. Counselor Lewis is Chair. Do you have any comments?
Well, good afternoon, your worship. There were four items on our agenda. The first item was the lease, sublease, or license of city-owned capital assets to nonprofit organizations. I'm very pleased to inform you and council today that at that meeting, we entered into twenty-six such agreements with the twenty-six such nonprofit organizations. The second item on the agenda was an item that we do once a year. We reconsider the two or three cultural grant recommendations. There were two applicants, the Absolute Theatre Company and the Eastside Culture Crawl Society, and both of those applications were denied. The last two items on the agenda, I'm very, very pleased to inform your worship and council and through council, the public, were items that related to council taking a very firm position in the best interests of our taxpayers. Item three on our agenda was the issue that relates to a provincial initiative to arbitrarily cap the business taxes of businesses that are located and working in the port industry. That would be a provincial incursion into municipal jurisdiction, and of course, what it would result in is an arbitrary and artificial increase in the taxes that all other taxpayers would pay. Council resolved to pass a motion requesting, your worship, to send a letter to the province expressing council's very strong objection to that provincial incursion into municipal jurisdiction. The fourth and last item on the agenda related to the potential privatization of B.C. Hydro and the very, very grave impact that would have not only on businesses located in the city of Vancouver, but more importantly, the city's energy bill impacting on all taxpayers. And we passed a twofold motion, the first portion of which was to express our very strong support for the class-action lawsuit that has been initiated by a number of concerned citizens, a number of concerned taxpayers, a class-action lawsuit that seeks to protect B.C. Hydro from being privatized by our provincial government. The second half of the motion called upon the provincial government to abandon its plans to have B.C. Hydro join the U.S.-based private utility consortium known as RTO West, which would essentially remove decision-making powers from the province, from B.C. Hydro, and leave them in an unaccountable and unelected foreign decision-making body. And I would move approval of those minutes, your worship.
Seconded, seconded by Counselor Woodsworth. All those in favor? Opposed, carried unanimously. Minutes three are the minutes of the regular council meeting following the Planning and Environment Meeting of September eleventh. Counselor Roberts is Chair. Do you have any comments?
Yes, we have three items on that agenda. The first out with the Vancouver participation in two thousand and six Habitat Plus Thirty and World Urban Forum. That is with regards to the upcoming occasion of the thirtieth anniversary of the celebrated U.N. Habitat Conference. And council authorized staff to work with Habitat Plus Thirty and the World Urban Forum Secretariat to identify the city's contribution to the two thousand and six event, and if required, prepare a multi-party agreement for council approval outlining roles, responsibilities, and financial arrangements relative to the city. Council also encouraged the Secretariat to engage a broad range of groups in the planning and delivery of events to include funding to support the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives Two Thousand and Six World Congress. Council further agreed to encourage their counterparts in other cities to participate in the event. The second item regarding the city plan Community Vision implementation, Sunset and Victoria Fraserview Killarney action plans. Council received for information the Community Vision Implementation Strategy for Sunset and Victoria Fraserview Killarney, approved the creation of a staffing position to implement the vision program, and approved an annual budget of ten thousand for each vision community for communications and outreach expenses. That funding is to be spent on the recommendation of the Vision Implementation Committee, a small step toward moving some of these decisions to the local level where they belong. The third item was regarding a height relaxation at three eight, three one Main Street. Council advised the Director of Planning it would favor a height of forty-four point five four feet for the construction of a three-story commercial, retail, residential building at thirty-eight, thirty-one Main Street, subject to revision as approved by the Director of Planning. I move those minutes be adopted.
Seconded, Counselor Woodsworth. All those in favor? Opposed, carried unanimously. Minutes four are the minutes of the regular council meeting of September sixteenth. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Would someone move adoption? Counselor Cadman, seconded by Counselor Roberts. All those in favor? Opposed, carried unanimously. Minutes five are the minutes of the regular council meeting following the City Services and Budgets Meeting of September eighteen. Counselor Lewis is Chair. Do you have any comments?
Your worship, there were only two items on the agenda that morning. The first item was council approving engineering services, issuing a tender requesting bids for one-year and five-year terms for the apartment recycling collection services in areas currently being serviced by private contractors. The second item related to the healthcare sector and a plan that's currently in the works by two hospitals located in the city of Vancouver to begin contracting out its security services. By way of a very brief background, your worship, the employees currently employed by these two hospitals have been there for many, many, many years. They are paid a competitive salary. They are highly skilled, not only in dealing with violence, when it unfortunately and very sadly does occur in emergency wards and in certain very stressful situations, but more importantly, they're highly skilled in diffusing and avoiding situations that might otherwise result in violence. These employees are to be all laid off, laid off en masse, to be replaced by employees from a private company, a private company that has acknowledged and indicated on the record will pay, on average, between minimum wage, eight dollars per hour, and a ten dollars per hour. In a nutshell, your worship, council's concern was that the unavoidable and inescapable conclusion is that there will be a very significant increase on the city's resources, on our police department and our fire department, and that will have a negative impact on our budget. We passed a motion expressing our very grave concern with this, communicating our concerns on this issue to the chief executive officers of the Vancouver Coastal Health and Providence Healthcare, specifically that the elimination of skilled and experienced security officers from the healthcare teams at VGH and SPH, and replacement of these experienced security personnel with inexperienced security personnel appears to have seriously weakened the morale of emergency room and hospital healthcare staff, and thereby appears to put at risk the quality of emergency medical services available to the citizens of Vancouver. And with those comments, I'll move approval of the minutes.
Seconded, Counselor Woodsworth. All those in favor? Opposed, carried unanimously. Minutes six are the minutes of the regular council meeting following the Planning and Environment Meeting of September eighteen. Counselor Roberts is Chair. Do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. The first item was a warning to prospective purchasers at twenty-two-seven-nine East Fifty-Ninth Avenue. Council directed a thirty-three-six-D notice be placed on the title of this property in order to warn prospective purchasers of violations of the Vancouver building and zoning and development bylaws. The Director of Legal Services was authorized to commence legal proceedings if she deems it necessary to do so. The second item was a cultural amenity bonus, heritage density transfer, and CD-one rezoning at four-eighty-eight Robson Street. Council gave its approval in principle for a cultural amenity package in relation to the development application for four-eighty-eight Robson Street, including art starts as the proposed onsite cultural amenity. Approval in principle was also given to the applicant making a contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund of the net value of the heritage density transfer to the site. Council also approved recommendations to refer a rezoning application for four-eighty-eight Robson Street to a future public hearing. The last item was regarding a significant new rezoning application. Council heard verbal reports from staff on two new rezoning applications, which have been received by the Planning Department for sixty-four fifty Claridan Street and thirty-eight, thirty-seven Point Gray Road, which is the Jericho Tennis Club. I move those minutes be adopted.
Seconded, Counselor Cadman. All those in favor? Opposed, carried unanimously. We need a motion to go into committee as a whole. Counselor Louis, seconded. Counselor Stevenson, all favor, opposed, carried unanimously. Council will now consider the consent agenda items. We have a communications item, and administrative reports A-one to A-six, and policy reports P-one and P-two before us. Re-A-one, staff advise that the business license hearing of October ninth will not go ahead, and therefore, we do not need to identify panel for the hearing. Each of the other reports and communication have recommended from officials for council's recommendations. Council may adopt the recommendations for the communication reports collectively in a single motion. Does any member wish to hold any of these for debate, separate vote, or because of conflict of interest? Counselor Roberts.
No.
You're on the board, okay?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was...
That's okay. Counselor Louis.
Yes, your worship. I'd like to hold A-three, A-six, and P-two.
A-three.
A-six.
A-six.
And P-two.
P-two. Are there any others? I will accept the motion from Counselor Bass to adopt, to move the adoption of the recommendations before council contained in the communication. Well, I'm not finished yet. And the administrative and policy reports from officials with the exceptions of report A-one, report A-three, A-six, and P-two, which are being held for debate or separate vote. All those in favor? Opposed, carried unanimously. I will now read out those reports. A-one is a business license. We've canceled that. A-two is three-seven-four-nine West Thirtieth Avenue, Extension of Development and Business Permit Number DB-412167. A-three is approval of easement agreements for encroachments and parking onto the city-owned property at one-thirty... Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, okay. A-four, Boundary Road Maintenance Agreement. A-five, Form of Development, four-eight-nine-nine Valley Drive. P-one, miscellaneous tax amendments, zoning and development bylaws, CD-one bylaws, official development plans, zoning and development fee bylaws, and policies and guidelines. Counselor Louis, you have the floor.
Thank you, your worship. I have some questions of staff regarding A-six, or A-three. Is some staff available?
I'll answer them for you.
No, no, but they are.
Perhaps we could see if we could get staff, and we could move to A-six.
It's A-three.
A-three.
So, the question regarding A-three is that we're putting a restrictive covenant on our currently redeveloped parking lot in Gastown. No?
No.
Okay. Perhaps we'll move to A-six.
A-six, and we will see if we could get somebody who could address that.
A-six.
Yes, your worship.
The issue that we have before us is the statements of significance for Gastown-Hastings and Chinatown. And I see in the original request, it highlighted, in the report, it highlights two-hundred-and-thirty-five pieces of property, and what we're asking for here is that we will be writing statements of significance or asking for funding of statements of significance for a hundred-and-eighty-eight properties. What's happening with the remaining forty-seven properties?
Yes, that's correct. There's, your worship, there, we, in July tenth, when we reported to council, we were looking at two-hundred-and-thirty-five properties. Perhaps I can first speak to why the change, and then I can speak to what will happen to the remaining properties. Is, four things have changed since July tenth. The driver of this project is federal funding, which is the amount of a hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars, so that we can update our register, all of it, over the next five years with progressive funding coming from them. And this year, they've allocated a hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars for that. They've just started this program as of February of this year, and they've been slowly enrolling and slowly developing it. And at July, when we spoke to them, their estimate of what it would cost per building was seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Since then, they have been working with other municipalities, with the province, throughout Canada, and their new number target is eleven-hundred dollars per property. So, that's one change. Secondly, we, at the Stash Initiative, we determined it would be very valuable in this, in this project to not just do the individual buildings, but also do an area statement of significance, one for Gastown, one for Chinatown, and one for Hastings Street. So, we've included that in the contract, and that's reduced the amount available for individual buildings. Thirdly, we have, we've done four, we've contracted out four statements against, through, for pri- for private projects in the last three months, and we've discovered the extent of work needed to do these. So, the reason is, both at our local experience, provincially, nationally, we've realized that there's much more work involved to doing these projects for each building than what we estimated in July, and that's reflected in our numbers. And when you look at our numbers of a hundred-and-eighty-eight statements of significance, that reflects a price of a hundred, seven-hundred dollars and twenty, seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars per site, which we still think is very competitive compared to the provincial and national average of eleven-hundred. So, that's, that's the context of where the change comes. Your, your question was, what's going to happen to the other buildings on the site? Is, we anticipate that the federal government will be passing funds on to the province and on to the city for the next five years, so we eventually can do all the buildings on the Vancouver Heritage Register, which amounts to two-thousand-two-hundred buildings. Secondly, they, if owners that are not, of property that are not identified in this first hundred-and-eighty-eight come forward with a proposal to revitalize their site, then we will work with them to get a consultant and give them compensation for that when they come forward with their proposal. So, if you have one of those buildings in, in the downtown east side that wasn't picked up in this first round, then it will either be picked up next year when we get additional federal funding, or when that project comes forward on an individual basis. Last note is that a hundred-and-eighty-eight sites also corresponds to what council approved in the month of July for the heritage management plans for Gastown, Chinatown, and Hastings Street. And at the end of July, when council was looking at Hastings Street, there was some discussion about what capture area should we include for Hastings Street, and council decided on not, and the project will pick up all those buildings in that area. So, I'm hoping that will answer your question.
Okay, I have, arising from that.
Please.
If I, if I've got it right, there is a commitment from the federal government through the provincial government that we will get funding for the further statements of significance for the remaining forty-seven buildings. Is there a commitment, or it's the expectation?
There is the expectation. It's, the federal funds were approved in concept in February of this year. Because we're facing a new government, we're not, we're hoping that this program will continue on in future years, but there's no guarantee.
Okay. Where are the forty-seven remaining buildings primarily located?
I, I will get you a map. They are in the area of Victory Square and BD Street. So, they are on the westernly part of the Hastings Street corridor. And here, if you want, I could pass out a map that illustrates.
Okay, but, but it's on primarily the Hastings corridor on the westernly side or the easterly side?
On the, this is a map, can you, are you able to read that from here?
Yes.
So, we have Gastown in green, we have Chinatown in orange, and blue is the Hastings corridor that's captured in the, in the recommended project. Hastings Street continues on, here's Victory Square, it continues on to the west. So, this area is an area that we originally thought we would capture. Equally, there is the BD Street, which is considered part of Victory Square as well. BD Street, which goes from Pender Street down to BC Place, is another area that we are holding off to the future.
Okay. Thank you, your worship.
I just, go ahead.
No, I was going to move the motion.
I just have one question. It, it seems like we have a lot of buildings in Gastown, and, and we have a lot of buildings in Chinatown, but again, the Hastings Strip seems to fall off the map here. Certainly, I agree with Chinatown. I think it's been underutilized as a historic venue, but I don't think anybody can pretend that Gastown hasn't had its share of, of work over the past few years. And so, I'm just wondering, why didn't we just let Gastown slide this time and do Hastings Strip?
Well, the, for this project, our recommendation was to do all the buildings that are captured in the heritage management plans that council approved in July, on July 10th and at the end of July. So, this exactly matches that. For the reason that, in the management plan, one key approach we have is that the applicants coming forward first seek federal funding. To get federal funding, you need to have a statement of significance in, in place.
Right.
So, we think it's strategic to, to let them go to the federal funds, get their funds first, and then we will give the gap funding from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Your worship, I have one last final question. It's the, it's regarding the hire of a local resident. What's the duration of that hire?
It will be for, one member for the duration of the project, which will be running from when we engage contracts in the next few weeks to the, to March of next year.
And is this part of the destinies program where we're trying to encourage hiring of local residents, give them opportunities? Is that, is this part of that program?
I'm not familiar with that particular title. It's, it's us working with the downtown east side's planning staff and working with them and local agencies to hire a local, a local member.
Okay.
So, but it's, their reflection is it's part of one of the goals of the downtown east side.
Okay, thank you. I move A6?
Carried unanimously. I, I noticed that we are ready for A3. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, your worship. This is A3. This is the approval of an easement agreement on encroachments and parking onto city-owned property at one-thirty to one-sixty Water Street, and I have some questions of staff regarding this report. As part of this report, it states that we'd be placing a restrictive covenant, I believe, on, on our parking facility? That, or registered, registered easement?
Yes, your worship. There are a couple of easements. There's some encroachment of a cornice on the building, and there's also where we grant them the right to rent up to sixty parking stalls at market rents.
Now, this contract, or this registered parking easement for up to sixty parking stalls, the, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to avoid is any similar situation that's occurring with Lot One of, of Easy Park, where they manage, quote, they co-own a park, we co-own a parking lot, but we manage it currently. And by, by providing a registered easement, parking easement in this city-owned site, are we giving up any of our management or management rights in terms of security maintenance? We set the standard?
No, I don't believe we're giving up anything of that nature, councillor. Certainly, I mean, it is a good business deal for the city. We're getting some rights from the owner in exchange, which I think represent excellent value to the city. In exchange, we're allowing them access to sixty stalls in a very large structure. There are a number of, other stalls are committed to other uses such as the Woodwards Building and such as the Wex Development, and I think that this does not give up any management rights, it's just a matter of assigning certain spaces to that user.
I just wanted to highlight this because I don't want a repeat of any misunderstanding in terms of what we're doing here, which is to allow them to use our space, but we retain our right to manage it.
That's correct.
Thank you. Your worship, I move A3?
All those in favor, opposed, carried unanimously. P, P2?
Yes, thank you, your worship. P2. These are loading requirements that, loading requirement standards for new development. And having been in council just for a few months, but I have received numerous emails regarding parking and loading requirements in our west end especially. And I'm wondering about the, if we're going through a loading requirement review of new development, whether or not it, there's a possibility of the city reviewing the spaces available to some of these developments downtown. I see here, between one-hundred and two-hundred-and-ninety-nine units, there is one loading bay requirement. But what I've been hearing from, from residents is that they move, not through the month, but at the end of the month, or perhaps on the fifteenth of the month, and therefore you have perhaps potentially out of the three-hundred, two-hundred-and-ninety-nine units, fifteen people all vying for that one spot, and therefore occupying that site for the day, but leaving everyone else out either on the street or scrambling for some sort of loading facility. Is there, is there something that we can do to facilitate that happening more smoothly?
And, your worship, part of it would depend upon the management of the, either the strata council or the, the owner of the building, that they might be able to better coordinate their tenants who are moving in or moving out. At present, we have no parking bylaw requirement for residential loading. And what has happened over the years is that when CD-1 comprehensive developments come along, such as Bayshore Gardens and Concord Pacific Developments, Arbutus Gardens, we have, even though there's no requirement in the parking bylaw, we have been putting in, in the, in those zoning texts, a requirement for, for residential loading. So, that's, that's what the practice has been now for approximately ten years. In our consultation to see whether or not we should be now moving this into the parking bylaw as something that is just a standard requirement, not just in these, you know, in these CD-1 areas, but just as a citywide requirement, what we heard from people is that there's a really difference, there's a big difference between rental buildings and strata buildings. And it seemed that in the strata buildings, the moves aren't so numerous, that the feeling was, the feedback gave us, that we were given was that this should be fine for those buildings. However, it was concert properties that told us for Collingwood Village, for five rental buildings there, they're getting four to seven percent of their tenants moving in and out each month. So, that's a move out and a move in, because of course, they fill right away. And so, they felt that, that for rentals, that perhaps we were a little bit on the light side in terms of the required loading. Now, there is a downside to requiring more and more loading. It makes housing less affordable if we require too much, and as you point out, you know, there's large portions of the month when, when the loading wouldn't be required at all. So, it makes it more affordable and, and, you know, it is, if, if the building did go to a strata count, strata titling, then it would be no longer rental, and then the demand would go down. So, and then they'd wind up with too much loading provided in the building. What we have undertaken to do in the engineering department is that for rental buildings, we would look at situations on a case-by-case for rental buildings, and we would endeavor to provide more on-street loading opportunities for those buildings when they're rentals, as opposed to requiring more loading, making the buildings more expensive, housing less affordable, and that sort of thing. So, that, that's the approach we'd like to take.
But in new development, isn't it, isn't it a requirement that we also provide, the developer provides some visitor parking? And that if we, if they do, if my assumption is correct, then we could use that visitor parking, you could designate that visitor parking for a period of time of, of the month, whether it be the end of the month, the middle of the month, for loading and, and write it into our requirements?
Okay, now, we're getting into the realm of parking, and if visitor parking generally is not required in the bylaw, it's, it's built into the requirements overall, and then the, the individual building allocates its parking. Those that are sensitive to the needs of the building as a whole generally do designate some spaces for visitors. Unfortunately, in many, many cases, the total parking in the residential building is not adequate for the needs of the residents themselves, and they often preempt spaces that might otherwise go to be used for visitors, because it seems like the, the residents' needs seem to trump the needs of occasional visitors.
You're saying it's not possible?
We, we are going to be looking at visitor parking in, in new rezonings such as Southeast Falls Creek.
Yes.
We are looking at perhaps centralizing, maybe there's a better way to handle that, and, and we can get shared use, time sharing of the use of those spaces for visitors with non-residential uses, so we can compress the total amount of parking. So, that, that's a good opportunity there to achieve an ample supply of visitor parking. But, you know, it's important, you know, to consider visitors as well as the residents' needs when we set parking standards. That's true.
Okay. Thank you, worship. I move P2.
Opposed, carried unanimously. I'll read those out. A3 is approval of easement agreements for encroachments and parking onto the city-owned property at one-thirty dash one-sixty Water Street. A6 is award of consultant service contract, statements of significance for Gastown, Chinatown, and Hastings Street. And P2 is loading requirement standards for new development. I'd like a motion to rise for committee of the whole. Councillor Cadman, all those in favor, opposed, carried unanimously. Adopt the report of the committee of the whole. Councillor Cadman, seconder.
Second.
Councillor Bass, all those in favor, opposed, carried unanimously. Bylaws, we have bylaws one to ten for consideration by council. Council may adopt these bylaws collectively in a single motion. Does any member wish to hold any of the bylaws for debate, separate vote, or because of conflict of interest? Seeing none, I will expect, I will accept a motion from councillor Bass, moving adoption of the bylaws listed in the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council, except for those members excused as noted in the agenda, vote to enact the bylaws listed in the agenda for this meeting as numbers one to ten, inclusive, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign and seal the enacted bylaws.
All those in favor, opposed, carried unanimously. Bylaws, one, a bylaw to amend zoning and development bylaw number three-five-seven-five, Reef Farmers Markets. Councillors Green, Louis, Stevenson, and the mayor excused from voting. Two, a bylaw to amend parking bylaw number six-zero-five-nine, Farmers Market. Three, a bylaw to amend licensed bylaw number four-four-five-zero, Farmers Market. Four, a bylaw to designate certain real property as protected heritage property, one-thirty-dash-one-three-two West Tenth Avenue. Councillors Green, Louis, Stevenson, and the mayor excused from voting. Five, a bylaw to authorize council entering into a heritage revitalization agreement with the owner of heritage property. Councillors Green, Louis, Stevenson, and the mayor excused from voting. Six, a bylaw to designate certain real property as protected heritage property, eleven-eighty Homer Street. Councillors Green, Louis, Stevenson, and the mayor excused from voting. Seven, a bylaw to authorize council entering into a heritage agreement with the owner of heritage property, eleven-eighty Homer Street. Councillors Green, Louis, Stevenson, and mayor excused from voting. Eight, a bylaw to amend downtown district official plan development bylaw number four-nine-one-two, re-general office live-work use. Councillors Green, Louis, Stevenson, and the mayor excused from voting. Nine, a bylaw to amend sign by law number six-five-one-zero, live-work use. Councillors Green, Louis, Stevenson, and the mayor excused from voting. And ten, a bylaw to amend by law number eight-four-three-nine, which amended zoning and development bylaw number three-five-seven-five by rezoning an area to CD-1, re-eleven-twenty-eight West Hastings Street. Councillors Green, Louis, Stevenson, and mayor excused from voting. We have no administrative motions and six motions on notice. The first notice, notion on notice, the first motion on notice is from councillor Ladner.
Your worship, I'll just read the motion because I think it pretty well explains itself. Whereas aggressive panhandling, open drug markets, squatting on public land, theft from auto, shoplifting and break and enter are perceived by many citizens, tourists, and businesses as a growing problem in Vancouver. And whereas Vancouver's social and economic health depends on its overall livability, until now the top-ranked in the world, and whereas Vancouver City Council has demonstrated its concern for the homeless, victims of drug addiction, and the safety of sex trade workers, including leadership on opening a safe injection site, investments in low-income housing, and a commitment by the mayor for community forums on the safety of sex trade workers, and whereas average taxpayers, taxpaying citizens and businesses are feeling that their concerns about the safety and livability of their neighborhoods are not being heard, and whereas action to help victims of drug abuse, poverty, violence against sex trade workers, and welfare changes, action has to be balanced with the actions to maintain the safety of neighborhoods and the economic viability of the city, and whereas, at its meeting of sixteenth September two thousand and three, city council requested that these and other issues be taken to the Vancouver Caucus for discussion, and for information, that's a meeting of levels of government above ours as well as our own. And whereas this council believes strongly in citizen input and should have it, should have it prior to the discussion at the Vancouver Caucus, therefore, be it resolved that city council convene a mayor's forum to receive input from citizens, neighborhood groups, and businesses regarding the impacts of aggressive panhandling, open drug markets, squatting on public land, theft from auto, shoplifting, and break and enter, along with suggestions for actions the city can take to improve neighborhood safety and livability. And since I have introduced this motion.
Seconder, please.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Councillor Sullivan, seconded.
May I second it?
Yes.
Can I proceed? Since I introduced the, this motion, or it's been in the public realm, I've had an increasing number of people who have been speaking to me about this, and particularly, people who have had ideas of how to solve this problem. I think that all of us have heard stories about concerns that people have, the feeling that the public realm is disintegrating, and the safety of the streets is not what it used to be. And I would applaud this council and the mayor on the efforts that we've been taking in concern for the people who have the problems that are resulting in this situation. But I do think it's time that we dealt with the, the majority of the people who are feeling that the city is not what it ought to be, and that their lives are diminished because of threats, real or perceived, that they are receiving when they walk around their neighborhoods. And I would hope that we would get more than just a lot of complaints and problems, but also some ideas for solutions. I know that the police have been looking at this issue for years, many social agencies have been looking at this issue for years, and there are some ideas out there that we could adopt. And I think we should also just understand the pressures and the concerns that are out there, and that this mayor's forum would be in the spirit of the mayor's forums that we've had so far. We've had them about the Olympics, and we are, we've been promised to have them on the safety of sex trade workers. And we could use this information to bring forward to the Vancouver Caucus meeting, which will address this topic among many other topics. That's pretty much all I have to say on it. Thank you.
Thank you. I suppose, I have a couple of questions. The first question I have is, until now, top-ranked in the world, did we, did I miss something? Did we drop?
Your Worship, I would suggest that we dropped from number one to number two, and-
That was, that was a year or so ago, though.
Right. And I would think that we are in danger of losing that ranking.
But we haven't dropped.
These problems are now-
I'm not being facetious, I just, if we dropped to third, I, I didn't hear about it.
No, and I haven't said it happened, I'm anticipating it with some, some dread.
Okay. The second question I have is, and I, I generally, you know, I welcome your, your comments of us being concerned for some of these citizens. I think, one of the key things that you said, and that I think we all can agree with, is that we have been looking at this situation for years, all agencies, all governments, and it is a difficult one to tackle. And I just want, want to say that, you know, this didn't take place just in the last year. It is, it has been growing for years, and we do need to look at it, so, thank you.
If I could just comment on that, I would agree with you, but I don't think that that means that we can let up our vigilance on the topic.
No, I agree.
There have been some changes in the past year, two in particular. There's been an increase in the use of crystal meth by people who are hanging out in the streets, which is, renders people a lot more dangerous and unpredictable, and permanently damaged, by the way. And we have also had the crackdown on the downtown east side, which undeniably has pushed some of these problems into neighborhoods that have not experienced them before, and shocked a lot of people in realizing that there are these problems in their community, and they were, they are very eager to deal with them, and not have to put up with them.
Thank you. Councillor Green.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would like to support this motion, but I'd like to make a couple of very minor amendments, and I do have copies of what I would like to propose. And I'll read them out. So I'm not changing any of the motion itself, just adding to it. And I would add, whereas it is important to understand the underlying factors that impact negatively on neighborhood livability and safety, as well as the lives of many citizens of Vancouver. And then at the, at the resolve level, I'd add, be it further resolved, the mayor's forum examine the causes behind activities and behavior that negatively impact on neighborhood livability and safety, and the impact they have on people living in poverty. And be it further resolved, that the mayor's forum identify ways to mitigate the root causes, in particular, the change in income assistance that are scheduled to take place in April 2004, and will potentially result in thousands of Vancouver city citizens being cut off income assistance, or having their benefits reduced. So may I speak to that? Do I need a seconded, or?
Yeah. Seconded by Councillor Ladner.
It, it's very important that when we look at issues, and I think that Councillor Ladner is correct, I certainly hear that people don't like panhandlers outside of their stores and, and those type of issues. But we have to look at it from two or three different angles. And there has been so much that's done in the anti-poverty and anti-homelessness movements that we don't want to do again. We have to learn from some of those experiences. We, I remember one time in Vancouver, many years ago, one of the BIAs came up with an idea that had not worked anywhere else, and they tried it here, and it didn't work, and that is, giving a panhandler a card that says, this is where you can go and, and get a free soup or something. Well, most people that are panhandlers actually see themselves as working, and one of the things they're trying to do is avoid going to certain places where they feel humiliated, or that their, that their actual being is even contested. Or they may have religious beliefs, and they have to go to a place that is religious of another denomination, and they have to be able to pray or sing before they're fed. So let, let's be real about it, folks. We have some real problems, and Councillor Ladner is correct, and I believe the police crackdown has moved some of the problems around. And what we really need to look at, if we're going to deal with these issues, and we're going to do it in a real way, we have to do it in a holistic way, in which we do look at the factors that cause this type of behavior. And I also mention that we are coming to a position where, in a very few months, we're looking at thousands of people being cut off welfare. The positive thing about the police crackdown moving some of these issues around is, this is nothing compared to what will happen when six to eight to 10,000 people lose their income. That means inability to pay rent, inability to buy food or clothing, inability for transportation, inability to look for work. So this is going to become a massive problem. Think of five or six thousand more people living in our parks, on our streets, panhandling, asking for food, asking for money. That's what we're going for, because we're going to have a very, very awful thing take place if it goes ahead, and that's people losing their entire income. So I think that the, Councillor Ladner has hit on some good points here. We need to, to stretch it out a little bit, so that we can look at actually the causes, and not just be out blaming the poor for their own poverty. So I would very strongly suggest that Councillor Ladner and Sullivan should adopt these motions, this amendment, and let's go forward with it. It's a good thing to do.
Councillor Stevenson?
Thank you, Your Worship. I too would be able to support this motion if it's amended, as Councillor Green has suggested. Living in the west end, of course, the problem has become greatly exasperated for many people who live there in the past couple of years, two or three years. And they often say to me, well, you know, what's going on? What, what's the problem? Why are there so many people that are out on the streets, or in the parks, or panhandling? And I think, you know, if you look back a bit, it's not too hard to figure out, not that many years ago, successive governments began to close our institutions, where people who lived and suffered with stiff pain ended up on the streets. Then they ended up on the downtown east side, and now moving out in other areas. People with addictions no longer, including alcoholism, no longer have places to go, rehab centers. There's no longer any social housing. The federal government got completely out of social housing some years ago, when, when then Finance Minister Martin decided that, that he was going to have a balanced budget. And so he moved to that by cutting out a number of things, one of them being social housing. And here in this province, we're very fortunate, for a number of years, to keep up that social housing. We've built a great deal of social housing, and so you didn't see as many on the streets. Now this government, this government in Victoria at the present time, has cut out building any social housing. So there is no social housing for people. And as Councillor Green says, there's been huge cuts in the welfare rolls, so people end up on the streets, they have nowhere else to go. And now, very soon, in April, that situation's going to be greatly exasperated, and I am very concerned about how people are going to react to it. And often, folks react by saying, well, look, you know, just put them somewhere else, another part of the city, or wherever. I have people suggesting to me even today, that we look at putting them out in places like Langley. Just please, get them out of our west end. But it is going to get worse, and so obviously, we have to deal with the situation, and we have been dealing with the situation, but it's not good enough, I don't think, just to have this tackled as the problems that you see, but you need to look at, at the causes in other cities. I might add, have looked at, I have a number of pages from one of our staff, who've looked at other cities in North America, as to how they've dealt with panhandling, and some have been pretty draconian, and I don't think that's the way that we're going to want to go.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. So I will be in support of, of this amendment. I would also hope that maybe we might even have some kind of a commission that come out of this, of citizens, to look at, there's maybe ten people out of the mayor's forum, maybe ten people looking at the problem from all different walks of life, to help us deal with this in the most compassionate and humane way as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ladner?
Well, I'm going to support the amendments, but I, I have to say that, once again, I feel like, that this council really is trying its best not to deal with the fact that there has to be some short-term measures, you have to step in and enforce some bylaws, establish some boundaries, and to set some limits for, for people and behavior in the street. And we're not, you have to be able to distinguish between poverty and addiction and behavior. And I'm talking about, I'd like to keep an eye on behavior, because I think that's where a lot of people are concerned. And we could get off into a lot of side alleys about, and, well, I mean, they're important issues, but we could get off into a lot of long discussions about what has to be done to, to address the root causes. And goodness knows, we have those discussions, and they're, they're vital to this question. But I don't want to lose track of the fact that, at the end of the day, people have to be able to walk in the streets and feel safe. And if we can have a big discussion about root causes and still have unsafe streets, then I don't think we will have achieved anything with this mayor's forum. I would like to also just comment on Councillor Green's notion that panhandling is work. I would strongly disagree, and I would say that if you look at the, the document that I believe Councillor Stevenson has, which I've also seen, where city staff some years ago, in response to NPA concern about this, looked at different cities and found that the number-one thing that has to happen, that happens in every city that addresses this problem, is education of people to tell them that when you give money to somebody in the streets, you are most likely not giving it for food or shelter, but for drugs or alcohol. And that if you really want to help people, you should give money to agencies that help them, you can give it to the religion of your choice, or the secular agency of your choice, but if you give it to people directly in the streets, you're encouraging this behavior, and that's one of the things that has to stop. So I would hope we would address that at this forum. Finally, on the matter of changes to income assistance, I think this is a huge potential problem, but we don't know the scope of it. And I was very distressed to see a note from the Director of Community Planning after a discussion I had, or the, I'm sorry, Jeff, whatever your proper title is, I didn't get that quite right, from Mr. Brooks of our staff, who, social planning, is that right? Thank you. Who has requested a meeting with the provincial government to know, to find out how many people are likely to be affected. Is it six thousand, is it 10,000, is it 600, so that we know what the impact is likely to be on April 2004? Because I agree, this is potentially a very big problem. And I would like to request that this council endorse the, Mr. Brooks' request to get information from the provincial government and open up a dialogue there, so at least we can be working with the province on discovering the scope of the problem, never mind trying to remedy it, in addition to try to remedy it. So I would support the amendments and sincerely hope that this is not going to sidetrack this discussion into a discussion on housing, which we could have at some other time. Thank you.
Just, just to let you know, Councillor Ladner, Mr. Brooks was singularly unsuccessful in getting those numbers from the provincial government. I'm in the process of contacting Minister Cole, and I'll get those numbers.
We're counting on you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Ladner. Councillor Woodsward?
Well, I'm glad that the entire council is concerned about the situation of violence in the streets, and poverty on the streets, and the general malaise that so many people in this city are finding themselves into, in. I think that the degree to which people are concerned is the degree to which we're seeing our own families torn apart by lack of income, lack of housing, concerns around homelessness. And people are going on the streets, and they're panhandling. Yesterday, there was a public news release by the Regional Executive Director of Dieticians of Canada, B.C. Region, in which she said that low-income British Columbians cannot afford to buy healthy food. And she refers to a low-income family needing up to forty-four percent of the disposable income on a nutritious diet compared to the average Canadian spending seventeen percent. We've heard about the people who've already been cut off income assistance, and we're hearing about the fact that on April the first, 2004, income assistance will be cut for single people, couples who reach their time limit, a $300 reduction for employable couples with one adult over the time limit, a $100 reduction for single parents, a $100 reduction for two-parent families, and a $200 reduction where both parents are over the time limit. We hear from the Canadian Centre for Policy Research, an esteemed research organization in this city, that talks about the ticking time bomb of B.C. welfare time limits. You know, we're hearing people in very desperate situations, doing what they can, and being very visible. I don't think the solution is to hide this, I think it's commendable that the mayor is calling a forum. I think it's commendable, we're talking about doing something together with all the citizens, not hiding problems. So I would support the motion with the amendments.
Thank you. Councillor Sullivan?
Well, first of all, I'm very reluctant to support the amendments, mainly because I believe that they are diluting the motion of Councillor Ladner. And I, I refer to the previous attempt for Councillor Ladner to have this serious issue addressed, when he did put a similar resolution, asking that we convene a Vancouver caucus. And that motion was diluted with the addition of such things as funding of transportation, cutbacks in welfare and childcare services, support of low-income housing, economic development. It basically made the motion ineffective. So I, I'm worried about these current amendments, that they will have the same effect of stymying us once again from dealing with these very, very important issues. The reason that I, I will support them, however, is because I believe that ultimately, as in the mayor's forum concept, the people will be able to provide the emphasis. And if the people who do come to speak to us are interested in Councillor Green's emphasis, they will speak, and they will bring these to light. Somewhat concerned about the reference to the changes to income assistance, I will, first of all, note that under the previous NDP government, provincial government, a hundred, over 100,000 people left the welfare rolls. Under this current Liberal government, about 80,000 have left the rolls. So they are, they are continuing an effort that was established and implemented by the NDP in the previous government, and I'm sure Councillor Stevenson will recall. And I might note that the actual number, real number of people who are on disability welfare have gone up by eighteen percent. There is essentially 10,000 more people on disability welfare today than there were when the Liberal government took power. So I think it's absolutely essential that we do provide people who are in need the support they have. I can tell you, I was on welfare for seven years, and I could tell you, it's the best thing that ever happened to me, to get off it. So I can, I, I do agree, if we can get people off welfare, wonderful. They will be, their lives will be much improved. Those who cannot, need the support, and there are other things that we can recommend, like I've, I've been quite vocal about the- I've been quite vocal about the change in policy that the provincial government has had to reduce the exemption. People are no longer, people in regular welfare are no longer able to keep any extra money up to a hundred dollars in the past. I think that is something we certainly like to do. Unfortunately, we probably won't get to do this at the caucus, the Vancouver caucus, because these motions have been so diluted. And I do want to make a final comment about the concept of panhandling as a job. There are people who do think that. There are people who do think that breaking and entering is a job. There are people who most certainly do think of drug dealing as a job. Absolutely, there are. And there are people who are able to make their income off it. I don't think any of these have a place in the public realm of Vancouver. And I'll just maybe make one appeal on an environmental, from an environmental perspective.
You have thirty seconds, I've come through.
Okay, I'll try to do it in thirty seconds. One of the most important things we can do for the environment is densification. We need to live more intensively in our city. One of the most important things to allow that to happen is to make sure the density happens at a high quality, that people can enjoy the public realm and they feel safe in the public realm of a high-density living. I believe that the best thing we can do for the environment is to ensure that those people who live West End in high-density neighborhoods have a quality of life and who do not have to deal with the nuisance and more than nuisance, the fear and the dread at people who are using the streets.
That's your time, Counselor.
For criminal purposes, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Green, second time?
Well, your worship, I was going to pass until that came out. That concept of densification, I think we just saw intellectual densification. And, I mean, I don't know, I mean, when you have this level of utter hatred toward people with problems, I have a very difficult time being objective about it. But here's what I'm trying to do. Counselor Sullivan, I note that when I moved a motion to try to deal with issues around homelessness, on September the sixteenth, again, you and Counselor Ladner voted against it. What we're looking at here, you bring up a couple of points that are of great interest to me. One is that the NDP cut people off welfare. Absolutely, they did, and I opposed it with all my heart and soul. I also oppose it when the provincial Liberal government does. I feel like as a citizen of this city, I have a right to be critical of things that hurt the citizens of this city. And I'm not afraid to stand up and say that I'm opposed to what's going on in Victoria and I'll deal with it in every way I can. But that's not the, that's what my amendment is about. My amendment is trying to deal with the issues that we have in a holistic way and not just trying to come out and blame the poor. When I say that some people believe that panhandling is a job, they believe it. Some people work very hard at it and in a very good way. There was a fellow that I noticed, a homeless guy who stood outside of a bank on Howe Street and opened doors for everyone, held his hat out, and some people gave him a quarter, maybe they didn't, but he opened the door and closed the door and helped you with your bag. I came back a couple of months later and they'd replaced him with a security guard, driven him off. He had created the job, but he couldn't have it, it had to go to someone else, it had probably never been to that bank. When we look at your definition of jobs, we look at your definition of jobs and you start going through the criminal behavior that you want to identify and somehow say that it's only poor people that are drug dealers, I can tell you right now, there are people living in some very wealthy houses in this city that are not homeless, that are not addicted themselves, that have made fortunes on it and probably drive their Ferraris to the same meetings you go to sometimes. Now, what we're trying to do is look at the causes, to get to the reality of what's going on and not blame the people in poverty. People have an opportunity and we want to give them that opportunity. When you look at the way that you don't see panhandling as a job, I don't either, but a lot of people don't see city councillors as having a job. Okay, and then.
Amen. Finally, that doesn't include the mayor, I hope. The mayor's different, okay?
The mayor's different. Finally, if we look at what some people have done when they have the chance, and I'm thinking particularly of the people around United We Can, homeless people, people who were classified as unemployable, people who could have sat home for the rest of their lives and received welfare checks, got together, they bucked the system, they put together a business now that brings millions of dollars into our environment and does one heck of a lot for the economy because of pick up the cans and bottles that would be going into the landfill. So they're ecologically ahead of a heck of a lot of people that are out there that have things that you would classify as jobs. Let's quit demeaning the poor and their intellectual and creative abilities, let's work with it and let's go for the causes, the loss of social housing and other issues, and let's work with the business improvement areas and see what we can do to get employment programs and other things so we can deal with this and quit trying to put all the blame on the people who are receiving these cuts.
Second time, Counselor Stevenson?
Well, I'm really quite taken aback, your worship, to equate panhandlers with those who peddle drugs. This, to me, is almost beyond any comment. I mean, I just don't know how Counselor Sullivan even can dare to say those sort of things. That is so degrading to people, ordinary people who, for whatever reason in their lives, have ended up on the, on the street. And most of them would rather be elsewhere, but for a whole number of reasons, mental illness, addiction, sometimes as you like to point out, by choice, I suppose, people end up panhandling. But to equate panhandling and selling drugs, personally, I think it's disgusting and I'm really shocked. You know, in some countries, panhandling is regarded as a holy place to be. If you've run out of money and you have no other way in Islamic countries, you are on the streets and you can handle and you must, if you're a good Muslim, you must give money to the, to the poor. Here, what you want to do is not honor them in any way or look on them as having had a difficult life, but equate them with those who peddle drugs. Every time we begin to talk about this and some sort of motion, as the one that Counselor Ladner comes up where he wants to hit hard and obviously there is a real problem, but he wants to come up with a kind of only law and order solution, we've got to deal with the issue that is presenting itself immediately. And we say, yes, we do have to look at that and we do have to try and deal with that because there are people in trouble, but we need to look at causes to try to deal with that. You throw up your arms and say, we're trying to divert, we're trying to go off in some other direction. To me, you can't do one without the other. It's impossible. It's like having some sort of an illness and you've got the symptoms and you say, well, I'm just going to keep dealing with those and we're going to get rid of those, we'll somehow get rid of those. But if we ever begin to look at the real problem and try to deal with that, we're diverting ourselves. We can't divert ourselves. Well, I'm very pleased to be part of a party and a group of councillors who doesn't want to just deal with the presenting issues, but also in conjunction wants to deal with the root causes. So I will vote for this, again, your honour, only if we pass the amendment.
Mr. Mayor, call the question.
Question, please, call.
All in favor of the amendment?
No.
I'm sorry. All in favor of calling questions?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor opposed?
Actually, I'm going to oppose it too, your worship.
Counselor Ladner, Counselor Stevenson, Counselor Green and Counselor Sullivan are opposed and the motion passes. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. I think that there are going to be some.
The motion has amended?
Motion number two.
The motion has amended?
All those in favor of the motion has amended? Opposed? Carried unanimously. Motion number two, Counselor Cadman?
I'll just read it out quickly. Whereas council wishes the mandate of the Commission on Electoral Reform established by council motion on July twenty-ninth, two thousand and three, be clear to all voters, therefore be it resolved that council confirms that the mandate allows the commission to receive submissions and report to council on the merits of the current at-large system, the ward system and other alternative systems. I so move?
Second?
There is one councillor here in this room who is opposed to even having this commission, was opposed to the appointment of the commissioner, and has gone about saying that the way in which the motion came before council prevented the commissioner from hearing from the public on what may be perceived by some the merits of the at-large system or an alternate system. This is just to make clear that we have appointed a very eminent commissioner. We want that commissioner to be able to listen to the public, listen to what they say and come up with the best suggestions to this council possible without any constraint on what that, what Commissioner Berger may hear and may be brought forward by the public.
Counselor Sullivan?
Well, first of all, entirely inaccurate that I'm against electoral reform. I was in fact the one who moved the motion in January, that we, in December in fact, that we add the question of electoral reform to the Olympics referendum. I thought if we're going to have a referendum about a sporting event seven years from now, why don't we save money and allow the citizens to have a say and do that at that time? I wanted it to happen right away. No one would support me. I also moved a motion in July eighth, asking that we have a proper process, which is an open mandate, an independent process and a referendum. I moved that and those were all voted down. This council voted down having a referendum, not going to allow the people to have a say. This council voted down having an open mandate and this motion flexifies the modification, I got to say. This is not clarifying anything. I perhaps can give you an amendment that would help you if you really are interested in being clear about this. My amendment would be that the.
Do you have a copy of that?
No, no.
It would be nice if we have copies of the amendment.
First of all, I would like to get a reading from the city clerk because I spoke to the mayor's office last week and said I was very unhappy with the press release that came out. And, Mr. City Clerk, do you, does this motion then nullify my motion? That, that was the next motion?
Your B three? If this motion is adopted, yes, it makes it moot.
Now, the question I need to clarify then, this motion allows the mandate of the commission to receive submissions on the merits of other electoral systems. What it doesn't say is that it's able to act on them and make recommendations. If the commissioner does, can you clarify that for me, please?
We can, and you choose to read selectively.
Put your mic on.
It says very clearly, receive submission and report to council. You ought to read the entire thing and not be deceptive about that and report to council. Thank you.
Excuse me, we're not in a debating mode here, okay? Counselor Sullivan, please continue.
Then I accept that the intent of this motion is that if the commissioner determines that a different electoral system is preferable for the city, that commissioner can recommend that. Do I have your agreement?
No, no, excuse me. Is this like we were having a conversation with each other? You have what you have to say and then we'll continue on here.
Then can I get clarification from the city clerk? The way this is written, it appears to me that the commissioner has.
No, it doesn't come from the city clerk. The motion is made by Counselor Cadman. So you finish what you have to say, you put it to Counselor Cadman through me and then Counselor Cadman will answer.
Allow me to ask Counselor Cadman, then through you, your worship. I would like to ask Counselor Cadman about his motion. Does this motion enable the commissioner to conclude that the ward system is not the right system for Vancouver and that in fact the commissioner would be recommending a different system? Can you please ask Counselor Cadman for me, your worship?
Counselor Cadman?
Well, I don't in any way want to prejudice what the commissioner may hear. What we said is the commissioner may hear all and report all, giving their recommendations.
You're not on. You're still not on. Counselor Ladner?
Your worship, I'm unclear about this because I think there's a, there's a central issue here. The motion that we passed on whatever day it was at the heat of the summer was that this commission would implement the ward system. And we had the voice from the pulpit here saying, hear ye, hear ye, there shall be wards, in a biblical tone. And now, we heard, then we heard the announcement of the commissioner that said that the commissioner would be in charge of the possible introduction of wards. So if it's only just possible and not necessary, that is a distinct departure from the original motion that this council adopted. So this motion only says that the commissioner can hear about the at-large system. It does not say the commissioner could recommend the at-large system. If that were the case, that would be contrary to our earlier motion and that's what I would like to have cleared up here. And I think that's the whole reason that Counselor Sullivan brought this up. Are we actually going to allow the commissioner to recommend an at-large system? And I don't know how we address that question, but it's not addressed here and I think that is still an outstanding question.
Thank you. Counselor Sullivan?
Well, let me just read from the twenty-ninth, July the twenty-ninth motion. The electoral reform whose purpose and mandate is to receive input for the implementation of electoral reform that includes wards. There's no ambiguity around that. This council said, we are going to have wards and we heard Counselor Lewis very eloquently say, we don't need any more debate about wards, let's get on with it. Counselor Woodsworth said, we already had a referendum, it was the election. And of course, Counselor Stevenson very graciously said, hear ye, hear ye, we will have wards and you better get used to it. So that's the kind of rhetoric that I heard and that's the kind of motions that I'm reading here. And the other elements of that motion, the other terms of reference, were integrally linked to the implementation of wards. They were, they had the commissioner drawing lines, drawing out boundaries. Now, it appears that while the commissioner is in the process of ramming through a ward system and drawing lines, he's going to also say, by the way, if you guys want to talk to me about anything else, go ahead, don't talk too loud because I'm drawing lines on the boundaries of Vancouver to divide it up into little neighborhoods. And I would say, if that's the goal, then we should know about it. So in the, I will also mention, my motion on July eighth was that we would have an open mandate and that the decision should be, quote, "made by the citizens of Vancouver in a referendum." And that motion was defeated. I was in favor of electoral reform. I was in favor of reform that this city expects, the citizens expect, to have a say if you are going to change the fundamental character of their city. The mayor's office issued a press release on September eighteenth stating that the new single-person commission, there would not be a commission, there would be a commissioner. We were promised a commission, we were given a commissioner. I might note, San Francisco's Reform Commission had nine people on it. And the provincial government is now engaged in a process to get rid of the ward system provincially. And what are they, how many commissioners did they appoint? A hundred and fifty-eight. There are a hundred and fifty-eight commissioners, all randomly chosen citizens, who are going to determine the right form of government for the provincial government. This, this council has given us one commissioner and has given, has told this commissioner what they're going to do, what the answer is. And in fact, the terms of reference for that commission. And in fact, the, the terms of reference for that commission is to, quote, "Obtain the broadest possible consensus for this proposal." It's not an electoral reform commission, it's an electoral sales commission, it's electoral propaganda commission, the way it was set up. So I think it's very important, and I will suggest a, two amendments that will give a lot more confidence by the people into what we're really doing here. First of all, I amend that the, therefore be it resolved, and at the end I say-
Is this in writing?
It's, it's in, uh, writing.
Why do, why do we not have copies of it? We've supplied copies to you of our amendments.
Because, um-
You just made them up.
Because I'm just amending this now. I, because I don't think you could read my writing personally. Free to, well, let me, uh, if you prefer, I will have them typed up, but we'll have to go to another item, and, uh, I will have them typed up.
Oh, we could just go to another, another day.
What, let me just read to you, them to you. It's, they're very simple, I think even this council could grasp them. There would be free to recommend, that the commissioner would be free to recommend electoral system other than the ward system. So that would be, that would give a lot of clarity. And, second, that the commissioner, we would request the commissioner to make recommendations on holding a referendum, and campaign contributions, which has been much discussed about here-
A hundred and forty thousand.
And would, and appointing additional commissioners. I think this commissioner, I believe that this, uh, commissioner that has been chosen is a very honorable, a, a good man, great integrity-
Vote it again.
He does have, um, quite a partisan background, he was the leader of the NDP provincially.
That's your time councillor Sullivan, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, do you have a second here for this amendment? Councillor Roberts? The amendment is on the floor. This is to the amendment?
Um, well, I think, um, this amendment, uh, councillor Sullivan is deliberately confusing the issue, making statements attacking a process as if it's confused. And in fact, really, all this is a guise, because he does not want to have a ward system, nor does he want any electoral reform. He's very happy with the status quo, and he's doing anything and everything in all kinds of maneuvering in order to just deal with the real issue, is to get on with investigating the ward system. To say, "Free to recommend other than wards," well, it says right in the second part, "To receive submissions and report to council on the merits of the current, current at-large system, the ward system, and other alternative systems." Like, this is redundant councillor Sullivan, I'm sorry, it just doesn't make any other sense than what's there. This is a clarification of what was the intent of the original motion, and you're just deliberately throwing a lot of words around to try to confuse the issue. As far as the other, on the, uh, referendum, I think that's been dealt with before, I don't think you can keep introducing motions on motions that have been defeated before, so I would suggest that that is just out of order, we've already voted on that, and, uh, it's out of the way. I, um, I, I think, um, uh, really, it comes down to a very simple thing. Kope has, from its formation, has wanted a ward system. It has campaigned for thirty-five years to get a ward system in the city. That's no secret, that was known to everyone. Then when we did get elected, an overwhelming majority in an at-large system, we finally, uh, beat the odds, got a majority elected, and lo and behold, we are carrying through with our campaign promises, even though we did very well in an at-large system, and many people say to us, "You're crazy, you did well in an at-large system, stick with it." But we are carrying ahead with our campaign promises, we're going ahead, and what do we do? We say, "We don't want to just make this a political process, we want to set up an independent commission, an arms-length commission, put someone in place with enormous stature and credibility, and turn 'em loose, and say, 'Please go out and investigate what the people of Vancouver want, and come back to us with your recommendations.'" And that's what's proceeding, and no amount of councillor Sullivan's obfuscation can hide that fact. So I urge everyone to defeat those amendments, adopt this clarification, that's all there is to it, and let's get on, thanks.
Councillor Ladner, second time?
I have a question, the city clerk, is it, is it in order to, there are two amendments here, and, uh, we've just heard the challenge to one of them, that it's, it's out of order. Is, is that in fact the case?
Uh, the portion of the second amendment regarding the referendum is out of order, because councils are ready to decide at that issue.
Okay, so we are still able to talk about, uh, do we request the commissioner to make recommendations on campaign contributions and appointing additional commissioners?
Uh, not on appointing other commissions, council decided that it would be a sole commissioner, so that issue's not before council.
Okay, so we could discuss campaign contributions.
Uh, you could, you could, you could refer campaign contributions, yeah.
Okay, I think it's an important issue. Um, then I would just like to, for, just, uh, with respect, uh, and I know councillor Roberts has a, a history in journalism, and I'm surprised that she doesn't recognize the difference between receiving submissions and reporting to council on the merits of an at-large system, and recommending electoral systems other than the ward system. They're two completely different things. One is to talk to council about the at-large system, the others have the freedom to actually recommend an at-large system, and that is not in the original, uh, terms of reference, nor is it, um, addressed in this, um, motion before us today. So I would strongly support the, uh, what's left of the second part of the amendment, and the first part of the amendment, that, uh, if in fact this coun, this commissioner is being asked to, uh, is free to recommend an at-large system, let's spell it out and say it, and not play obfuscation with this motion. So I'm supporting the amendment.
Councillor Sullivan. Third, third or fourth time, I've lost count here.
This is very, very unclear. If this motion is redundant, and it's already inherent in the first motion, then pass it. There's no harm, pass it. I think what we are saying is that people are going to be able to speak to the commissioner, but the commissioner's not going to be able to do anything about it. What a waste of time. The commissioner, if the commissioner hears strongly from people that, for instance, the preferential ballot of, uh, an at-large system is the way to go, it sounds like from what you're saying is that this commissioner could not, if it did not include wards, this commissioner could not recommend it. Now, I have read, uh, Thomas Berger's book, One Man's Justice, I loved the book, he's a brilliant man, I don't think he's going to put up with these kinds of constraints. This is, this is, uh, this is unbelievable, that he would be told that he must implement a ward system, however, he can listen to people about other systems, but to do his job of getting this, ramming this ward system through, and I'm so pleased to see that this council is here again, told the citizens of Vancouver, they are not interested in a referendum, they're not interested in what they have to say about their own form of government, that this decision will be rammed through by this Kope council. So that is great, we have that clear. We also know that, uh, the campaign promise that Mayor Campbell made on October thirty first on the Rafe Mayor Show with a, uh, a debate with all the leaders of the different parties, when he promised that if elected, I will, ha, I, I plan to have a referendum in two thousand and five. That was in the Rafe Mayor Show on October thirty first. This promise was repeated in Ju-, uh, in November first in the Vancouver Sun, a referendum on the electoral reform in two thousand and five. I'm pleased to see this council is open about breaking its electoral promise, about getting elected under one pretense, and then acting in another way. So I, uh-
You have thirty seconds again.
Very, very depressing, of course, I'm sure to myself, as well as many citizens who are concerned that the people have a say about what their city is going to be like. My two recommend, my two amendments-
Are out of order.
Basically, appointing additional commissioners at the, that the, what I'm recommend, what I'm proposing is that the, no, no, the, the one that is not out of order is, uh, well, campaign contribution, there's two. One is that the, the commissioners be free to recommend-
Your time is up councillor-
Electoral systems other than the ward system.
Thank you. We're discussing the amendment. I just think I have to jump in here, since, since councillor Sullivan has all of these numbers. When we go to appoint a councillor, or I'm sorry, go to appoint a commissioner or a commission, all we hear is the whining and moaning, uh, from councillor Sullivan about how much money it costs. Now, let's imagine a hundred and fifty-eight commissioners, all appointed by the city, at what, what would be fair? A hundred thousand, a hundred thousand, right. So first of all, I'm not arguing with you, you had your chance. So, you know, the fact of the matter is, is that councillor Sullivan has still not looked around this chamber, has still not realized the citizens of this city have spoken, and that he lost. And he's now worried about not being able to get elected. We've heard that. I should note to you that a plan, I plan to have a referendum, is not a promise to have a referendum. And even if I did, I'd say, "That's fine, you're right." I am not going through with that, because I've listened to the citizens and I've listened to the rest of the councillors. So I'm really tired of getting the words twisted within these chambers. If you cannot get your amendments together, if you don't have the time to write them down prior to your two minutes before entering the chambers, then we will have to address that. Councillor Bass. Sorry, I just took you off. Councillor Bass? Councillor Bass, sorry.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I would like to address the, the NPA wine machine, and I'd like to give them a, a basic lesson in arithmetic. Uh, first of all, I agree with councillor Sullivan. Uh, Tom Berger is a man of great integrity, great integrity. And he may, after fulfilling the mandate of receiving input from Vancouver citizens, neighborhoods, and communities, and providing advice to council, he may decide, here's where the arithmetic, uh, lesson, lesson in arithmetic comes in, he may decide to, number two, provide a report to council no later than May two thousand and four, where the optimum even number of neighborhood constituencies, this man of integrity, the optimum number, in his view, might be zero. Okay? It's an even number, okay? There is a flexibility right here. So, uh, with no further ado, these gentlemen have both spoken twice, Mr. Mayor, I move, I call the que, the call, I call the question on the amendment.
I don't think you can do that, sorry. You can speak, but you, you can't, you can't then call the question, you have to be next in line.
No, on the amendment, I call the amendment, let's vote on the amendment.
I don't think you, uh, clerk. Again, Dr. Bass is right. On the, on the question of the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Councillor Ladner, councillor Sullivan, oppo, opposed. Now with regards, uh, I'm not even sure on this amendment, uh, Mr. Clerk. You could maybe help us out here, it would appear that at least two of them are out of order.
Yes, your worship, you should rule, I'll take, and, and that it's an implied point of order on the, the question of the portion dealing with the referendum and the appointment of other commissioners. Um, I, I would take it that you should rule whether those are in order or not.
I rule them out of order.
You rule them out of order, then what remains is, uh, the commission on campaign contributions.
Okay, on the amendment of the commissioner addressing campaign contributions.
Let's cover it.
Yes.
The campaign, the campaign contributions, this covers part of the main original motion.
Yes.
And are we not revisiting the issue that is covered?
Yeah.
It is all going forward.
Does somebody have a copy?
Yes, I have, the, the original mandate does not address campaign contributions specifically, it has a general, um, statement about, um, other issues of democracy and such like things, but I, I have it in front of me, but I, I don't believe it speaks anywhere of, um, campaign contributions in particular.
So can I ask, uh, is the motion as, as it's supposed to read, or the amendment as it's supposed to read?
That's right, but part, part two of councillor Sullivan's amendment would now read that the commission, um, um, consider and make recommendations on campaign contributions.
So we're voting on this amendment. Mr. Mayor, discussion, councillor Bass.
Thank you. I'd like to read this. It says, "Establish a commission on neighborhood constituencies and local democracy whose purpose and mandate is to, one, receive input from Vancouver citizens, neighborhoods, and communities, and provide advice to council for the implementation of electoral reform that includes wards." So it says, "For the implementation of electoral reform," it doesn't say restricted to wards, it says includes wards.
We've now moved on here a bit, councillor Bass, we're now at, uh, we're now on campaign contributions.
No, campaign, so electoral reform, that's, that's my point. Electoral reform is a very broad statement, it could include, you know, what kind of hat you wear when you run for election, it can include how much money you have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so on the amendment-
And so the, the, the second part, we're sort of going backwards here, the second part of the amendment is that the commission, um, report on campaign contributions. That's the way it's stated, I assume that the, the method of limits and so on, I'm interpreting the, what it says, the motion says, "The commission, uh, report on campaign contributions."
And that's all remaining of the amendment?
Um, of the second part of the amendment, yes.
The, the rest is out of order.
The fir- There are, there, councillor Sullivan moved two amendments. One was that the commission be refri, free to recommend a le, an electoral system other than the ward system. And, um, you know, you may ask the mayor to rule whether that's already included in the, in the first motion, but it stands as a, an amendment. And the second, uh, amendment is that the commission report on campaign contributions.
Can I ask them to vote to be separate?
Yeah, they are separate, yeah.
Okay, on the first, let's call it A, and would you read that again for us?
That the commissioner be free to recommend an electoral system other than the ward system.
I rule that out of order. It's included, it's included in the initial, it's included in, in, I'm ruling it out of order. So, now that's gone, let's do B, and B would be, please?
The, the commissioner report on campaign contributions.
Okay, all those in favor?
Point of order, point of order. Mr. Mayor, I, I agree with your ruling, the first one out of order, I think the second one's out of order too, it's, this is a very general mandate.
Councillor Bass, we're not running, you know, I ruled it out of order, I'm, I'm having a vote on this one.
I thought you were on a roll.
All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried unanimously. Now, I'd just like to make a comment here. Uh, in the past, I've been highly critical of councillors of Kope doing amendments on the fly, and not having it written down, not having it thought through. I am now critical, the same, of councillor Sullivan. And I will be talking with the clerk, and in the future, if they're not in writing, I'm going to find out if I can rule them out, because we're at the point here where people are doing amendments on the fly as they sit here. You've had lots of time to look through all of this, so I'll be checking with the clerk on that, just so that we know that it's not-
I can clarify for you.
Okay.
The procedure by law requires motions to be written. Um, they, yes, they, they should be written, and I, I think that rule is applied very loosely, and council should be considerate in its application of that rule, but the rule already exists.
It will not be loosely from now on. Now, the amendment is down, we now have the motion, uh, the motion- The motion as amended. All those in favour? Opposed? Carried unanimously. B three, we've already, that's taken care of, I take it? It's redundant? P four, Counselor Sullivan. It's redundant, Counselor. We are now going to four. Push your button.
I do not believe that the B three is now redundant. We have seen this council refuse to answer the question. Is the Commissioner free to recommend electoral systems other than the ward system? If that is, this council refused to vote for that, that something was unable, unwilling to clarify. That means my motion is still in order.
Could you please address the point of order?
Okay, Mr. City Clerk, because I was, I did not get the clarity that I needed to determine whether or not the Commissioner is free to recommend a system other than the ward system, all this motion says is the Commissioner is free to listen to people, but not to recommend. Therefore, my motion, which says the mayor's office be directed to correct the news release of September 18th entitled, "Tom Berger Appointed the City of Vancouver to Head Commission on Reform," as it is in contradiction to the motions passed by council. I believe my motion then is still in order.
If it were the case prior to the adoption of this motion, of the motion, and then it's not the case now, so it really, it is moot as of now, given the adoption of the previous motion.
But the motion did not clarify.
Thank you very much. B four, Counselor Sullivan. Do you have a seconder for this, by the way? Counselor Ladner?
Well, okay, my motion here is basically that, therefore be it resolved, that council exercise restraint in dealing with issues that fall beyond the city's mandate. Now, just today, we heard Counselor Lewis describe two motions that we dealt with, a BC Hydro restructuring study that cost. And our taxpayers, $25,000. Sent our senior staff chasing after, understanding the issues of BC Hydro. We also heard from Counselor Lewis that a group of workers from the Vancouver Hospital spent almost two hours of council time last week discussing restructuring of the security system at Vancouver General Hospital. We spent a lot of time on issues that fall way beyond the mandate of city council. It's costing our taxpayers a lot of money, and we're funding that through our property tax. The city, the people of Vancouver deserve to have their tax dollars spent on issues that pertain to civic affairs, and I am very concerned. This city, in the past, in past councils, has been rated, I'll give you example of the Corporate Resource Group of Geneva in 1997, that rated, that looked at all the cities, the major cities of the world, 300, and they rated Vancouver number one in the world on issues that were of independent analysis of our infrastructure, of our crime and safety, et cetera. Vancouver was rated number one. Vancouver, as I have said before, is the only city in Vancouver, in Canada, that has a AAA credit rating. Obviously, this city has been fairly well-run according to independent studies. I worry that not only is our independent status as number one in the world in jeopardy, our AAA credit rating is in jeopardy, and I fear that as we move closer to the provincial election, there is a likelihood that council will delve more deeply into provincial affairs. Now, I would like to just make a statement.
Thirty seconds.
That I do believe that there are times when the city should make statements and even take action. And I'll give you example, AIDS funding. Vancouver was the first city to, in government of Canada, to actually fund AIDS. We were the first government to deal with needle exchange, first government to deal with daycare. That was this government in previous councils, and I believe that those were appropriate. There are cases where we need to make.
Fifteen seconds, Counselor.
Statements, and we need to do things that are outside of the city's mandate. However, these occasions should only be in extraordinary circumstances after much deliberation and reflection. I feel this council spent.
Thank you very much.
Way too much time outside of our mandate.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Well, Your Worship, one of the beauties of democracy is that on the issues of the day, there are, in fact, many different positions. On this issue, whether or not city council is spending too much time on items that are technically outside of its jurisdiction, I part company 180 degrees with Counselor Sullivan. If anything, I would suggest that we, in fact, do not spend enough time on those types of issues. But perhaps a little bit of history is in order. A little bit of history, because I think it's very important that the citizens of Vancouver watching today understand the context in which this debate is taking place. The context in which this debate has taken place for many, many decades. Back in the 1980s, in fact, to cite just one example, there was a worldwide campaign by citizens all around the world on one of the most important issues to have ever faced humankind, that issue being the arms rates, the nuclear arms rates. And the NPA then said the very same thing they say today, that city council should not deal with that issue, that city council is somehow or other limited, and its intellectual ability is so limited that it can only deal with two issues at a time, dogs and sewers, and can never deal with anything any more complex than dogs and sewers. And Counselor Rankin with Kope stood up and pointed out the irony, that if this council were to take a position, take an initiative, that moved the world just one small iota away from incineration, the benefit would not only be his children, but regrettably, the children of the NPA as well. That was said in jest. While the citizens of Vancouver marched by the tens of thousands on one rally over 100,000 in support of nuclear disarmament, and while the city of Vancouver, with a Kope majority, passed a motion declaring the city of Vancouver a nuclear weapons-free zone. That was ridiculed by the NPA then, and I note on the TV just a couple of weeks ago, ridiculed yet again. But friends, what was the result of that? The result was a rippling effect. Throughout the world, a rippling effect, and municipalities all over the world passed some of the resolutions, with citizens of the world noting then what we've always known, the three levels of government, federal, provincial, municipal, the municipal being the easiest to access, the most accessible, and the most democratic, and what thousands of municipalities had passed those resolutions. It was only a matter of time before a nation finally did the same thing. New Zealand declaring itself free, a zone free of all nuclear weapons, and that began the process of disarmament. Now, I fast forward to today. I noticed on the news just a couple of weeks ago, Counselor Sullivan complaining that the little signs that declared this city a weapons-free, a nuclear weapons-free zone, now that Kope has a majority again, being refurbished and being put up, complaining that Kope is standing up for its citizens about the very negative impact that will result from the privatisation of security services in our hospitals, complaining about the amount of time that those citizens, the security officers, took in explaining their situation to us. And very briefly, Your Worship, I'm conscious of the fact that we have a five-minute limit. Let me agree with Counselor Sullivan's recollection, it did take two hours. Let me remind Counselor Sullivan that as Chair of the committee, I've limited each of those delegations to five minutes. And in five minutes, they convinced, because it didn't take a lot of convincing, nine-elevenths of this council, of the need for this council to take a very firm position. They then spent a further two hours answering the questions that were directed by two members of this council. And I won't name those two members. And now, today, we find out that one of the points put forward against council dealing with those issues.
Thirty seconds.
Is the amount of time that took place. I'm proud of the fact that we have an open-minded council, a council that encourages and welcomes its citizens. We have open doors here at council, and when our citizens, our employers, who hire us on a term, a three-year term, ask us to deal with the issues of the day, I'll always be there, open-minded, even if two members of council are not. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you. Just in the interest of accuracy, you stated that now that Kope was the majority again, this is our first one. Not our last, but our first one. Counselor Bass?
Counselor, what's your amendment?
I'm sorry. I'm sure as Counselor Clerk can see, I've not got any better than Mayor Owen at this board here.
As difficult it is as to stand as a new councillor in this chamber, I really have to speak to what this motion is saying. Because Counselor Sullivan, you're saying that it's not a concern to the city council whether BC Hydro is privatised, and yet a city report is saying it's going to cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars if this proceeds. You think that $25,000 expenditure is not worth avoiding hundreds of thousands of dollars of expenditure, which then we would have to pass on to the taxpayers? I have to say that when I spoke to this motion at the Union of BC Municipalities, not only were people concerned as well throughout BC of the cost to the municipalities and to the taxpayers within their jurisdiction, but they overwhelmingly supported a motion just over a week ago, saying that they also oppose the privatisation of BC Hydro. I think that you're getting, in your attempt to sensationalise and mislead the public, you're really going away from what would in fact be the best thing for the citizens of Vancouver, and I ask you to reconsider your motion.
Thank you. I think that, I'd like to point out here that Counselor Sullivan has this continual idea that the sky's falling. I believe there is another historical figure that believed that. The fact of the matter is, is that we keep saying that we're not number one, we're not number two. Well, we are number two, and as far as I know, I haven't heard anything out of Geneva lately, but I assume we're still number one. He's been running this up the flag ever since the election started, that we are the only municipality with AAA rating. Not true. Every municipality in British Columbia has a AAA rating. This may come as some surprise to him, but he should check that out. I really have, it's like, it's like there's this insular world that we should be living in, that there is nothing outside of, as somebody said, dogs and sewers, that we shouldn't be concerned about the welfare of our citizens, that we shouldn't be concerned about the police costs that take place as a result of a change in a corporation, whether it's unionised or not. That's not my issue. My issue was, how are we going to be affected? How much more of our police services are going to be used because of this change? That we shouldn't be concerned about BC Hydro. I mean, here's a councillor who's running completely against everything that the UBCM says. I mean, I don't know what world that you live in, councillor, but it certainly isn't one that the rest of us have to put up with day in and day out. What happens in Iraq affects me. What happens to BC Hydro affects me. What happens at Vancouver General affects me. And certainly, we have to address these issues. Otherwise, we end up waking up one day with all of our police at VGH, we find out that our hydro bills has gone through the roof, and you'll be yelling and screaming because, "Oh, my God, the taxes have had to go up another quarter percent or half percent." There's a real world out there, councillor. You should come and share it with us.
Counselor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll wait till the applause dies down. I would like to address the NPA wine machine over there. Counselor, through you, a question to Counselor Sullivan. The question is, what part of this do you not understand? I'd like to read to you paragraph 186 of the Vancouver Charter. Power to watch legislation. Where it is satisfied that any proposed dominion, meaning federal, or provincial legislation affecting the city should be watched, promoted, or opposed, the council may provide for such watching, promotion, or opposition, and may defray the expenses incurred in relation thereto. So, my question through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Sullivan, is what part of that do you not understand? Okay, consider it rhetorical. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I find it interesting. Counselor Sullivan tells us that we're wasting time on things like BC Hydro, that is about a $3 million bill that we have to pay in this city, that if the rates go up by 40%, will be quite substantial. If you look at the community centres, if you look at the ice rinks, if you look at the schools, if you look at the whole system within this city, the implications, small business, large business, huge implications, but that for you is a waste of time. What I find a waste of time are these trivial motions that you bring forward, week in, week out, repetitive, nonsensical, with no substance. What would it mean if we adopted a motion that said, "Council exercise restraint in dealing with issues that fall beyond the city's mandate"? It means nothing. It's a waste of this council's time when there are far bigger issues that we have to deal with, and you, more than any other councillor, bring forward motions that waste our time. And I really wish you would exercise some restraint in the wastefulness of the time that you've put us through. Thank you.
I call the question.
Question's been called. All those in favour? Opposed?
Opposed.
One, two, three, four, five.
Calling the question.
Hard, I'm sorry? I thought you said you're calling the question.
I am calling the question.
Yes.
There seems to be some misunderstanding between the councillors, whether we're calling the question on the main motion, or the question of whether or not to test the House on whether or not the vote should be held on the main motion.
I'm testing the House. So, all those in favour of?
If you're allowed to accept a?
No.
Well, the question's been called. I don't have any options.
No.
All those in favour of calling the question? Opposed? Counselor Ladner, Counselor Sullivan, Counselor Stevenson, and myself. On the motion, all those in favour? Opposed? It's defeated. Counselor Ladner and Counselor Sullivan supporting. B five, Counselor Sullivan.
First of all, can I get a point of clarification from the city clerk? Several months ago, I brought up the issue of calling the question. When the question is called on other levels of government, it's usually a front-page story. This is called invoking closure, stymieing debate. And I do recall that the city clerk cautioned the council on the overuse of calling the question, stymieing debate, basically cutting off democracy. And I would ask the city clerk if he would repeat his previous cautions to us.
My previous observations were that it is an entirely proper parliamentary rule that can, and motion to be introduced and moved. And I believe my counsel for council at that time was that it is best used rarely. However, it is an entirely appropriate parliamentary motion.
Thank you.
So it's...
Councillor, move on to, we've had, you had your answer. B5, it's yours again.
Yes, well, I will make a brief comment that this council is against giving the people...
We are at B5.
And is against...
Are you prepared to go forward here, or not?
No, I'll meet my mother.
You will either go forward on this next one, or we will continue on. I'm the Chair, and you're not. So are you prepared to do B5? B6, councillor Ladner.
Your worship, this is a motion to ask the province to amend, well, I'll read it out. Be it resolved that the city request the necessary amendments to the Vancouver Charter to authorize the enactment of an anti-fighting bylaw similar to the anti-fighting provision in the City of Edmonton Public Places Bylaw, and further that city staff subsequently bring forward an anti-fighting bylaw for council's consideration. On the first point, it's necessary, we do not have the power to bring in an anti-fighting bylaw, and it would require a change to the Vancouver Charter. And on the second point, the purpose of an anti-fighting bylaw is to enable us to do several things. One is to do more with the police, the limited police resources that we have now. We know from experience in cities like Edmonton, Calgary, and Victoria, that an anti-fighting bylaw has the effect of letting police deal with fights on the streets and still stay on the streets themselves, and not have to go back to the police station and file a report, and remove themselves from the scene. People have asked me, do we have a proliferation of fighting in the streets now? And my answer is that I am hearing anecdotal evidence around the 4:00 AM openings, closings, rather, of the bars, that there is more street fighting going on. But we have also heard from the police around the Celebration of Light fireworks festival that there is a big issue around fighting and big costs that they have asked us to pay for to mitigate the fighting. So I have also looked into the experience in the City of Edmonton and other places where we, they've had such a bylaw. And other people from the Vancouver Police Force, the Bar Owners Association, have also looked into this, and have found, to their satisfaction, that an anti-fighting bylaw, where a police officer can attend a fight, issue a ticket, much like a traffic ticket, with a fine, usually in the range of $200, $250, does actually have an effect on reducing the amount of violence in the streets. And I think we should always aim for that. I think it's a noble goal to make the streets safer. And the bar owners are very strongly in support of this. It turns out that in Edmonton, about three-quarters of the people actually pay the fine, so it's not just laughed at and thrown away. And they think about it twice before they head outside to have a fight. So I think this would go some ways towards improving the public order in the city. It would help our entertainment district, it would help our spending on the police force budget, and as such, I would strongly recommend your support of it.
I'd like to note that I support this completely with councillor Ladner, and I believe that it is a, it is a good step forward, any tool that we can use. I think it'll need to be, the staff will need to come back to us with the mechanism, but I agree with this. Councillor Green?
I was rising the second for motion.
Thank you, councillor Green. Councillor Cadman?
Yeah, no, I'm just rising to speak in favor of this. I spoke to the colleagues in Edmonton, it does apparently work there as a deterrent, and particularly if it's a graduated fine, where the first time you get one fee, and the next time you get a higher, higher fine. So I think this is a deterrent, and may prove useful, it certainly has in the City of Edmonton. So I'll be supporting it.
Councillor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to congratulate you, councillor Ladner, on a constructive motion. Thank you.
This is getting nice here now. Councillor Stevenson?
Well, I'm going to join the niceness. I also will be voting in favor on this. I was interested in the editorial, and the sound that claimed this might be kind of attached now, but from my point of view, it's not a bad way to make cash.
Any further discussion on this? All those in favor? Opposed? Passed unanimously. I will now return to B5 if councillor Sullivan wishes to introduce his motion.
I wanted to make a, one, a 30-second statement.
You can either introduce your motion, or I will adjourn.
Then please adjourn.
Okay. You've had your opportunity to bring in your motion. I'm now moving on to new business inquiries or other matters. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, the new, councillor Green?
Yes?
My apologies.
Thank you, your worship. I have a motion I'd like to introduce, and I have copies of it for everyone.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
You can't call notice on something you can't even hear.
But we have to, no, first of all, we hear it, then you call notice, right?
Is that correct?
Right. You have a minute to introduce it.
Yeah. So, your worship...
Then it'll go to Thursday.
Okay, here, here's my motion. And I guess I can't speak on it. Maybe under new business, I can make some other inquiries. Whereas Vancouver is a cultural capital of Canada, and whereas arts and culture is central to the vitality of Vancouver's neighborhoods, and whereas Vancouver is a city laden with a multiplicity of talents, and whereas we need to encourage and showcase the performing arts, and whereas the quiet enjoyment of community life is an essential part of strong neighborhoods, and whereas small businesses are the backbone of the urban economy, therefore be it resolved that council requests the city manager to review and report back to council on bylaws regarding Class 1 restaurants.
Seconder?
Second.
Councillor Sullivan?
I call notice.
Thank you. This will be deferred until Thursday's meeting.
No! No! No!
Quiet, and I won't hear that.
I want to see you up there.
Your worship?
Sorry, how much is the mark? Sorry about that. Doesn't want them to call the question?
This is, excuse me, this is, this is a chamber, and your apologies are accepted. Councillor Sullivan?
Your worship?
Okay.
Your worship?
I'm sorry, yes, councillor Ladner.
I'd just like to ask a question. I know that people were invited here to make statements on this motion, but surely the invitation should have made clear that we do not have delegations at council meetings. And I was going to bring this up earlier. A lot of people waited here for a long time, I suspect, to speak to this motion.
There would be no delegations here, period.
Exactly. So why were people misled to thinking they could come here and speak to this motion when it would always go to the Thursday meeting, no matter what?
Well, I guess we're under new business. I have no idea. I didn't invite anybody to come here.
Well, I think there should be some apology to the people who've been waiting here.
Are we into new business now, Mr. Clerk? Pardon? We're into new business, okay.
Your worship?
These are points of order.
I suggest that I'll turn it over, if I can make my 37th statement, then I will take back my...
There, I'm not, councillor Sullivan, I'm not here to bargain with you. I'm sorry, you had your chance, and in a fit of pique, you decide to call notion, that's fine, or notice, that's fine. I can't do anything about that. Councillor Green?
Your worship, I was very clear to people that there would no, there could not be delegations here. I talked to the clerk about this, or the city manager, I'm not sure, about the fact that through the process, if this motion were to pass, we would have public delegations. I'm sure that we would ask for people from the industry, people who happen to like music, who like to live in this city and enjoy it, people who are musicians themselves that have the opportunity. People came here today because they wanted to see this get passed, and started off because they deeply care. I mean, I've got a petition here with 1,500 signatures.
No, no, no.
And email.
Councillor Green?
Yes, sir. The point is that I did not mislead anyone, and I resent that.
Councillor Green, okay, thank you. Is there any other new business inquiries or other matters? Councillor Cadman?
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge that yesterday, October the 6th, was World Habitat Day, as declared by the United Nations. And why this, I think, is significant is obviously this city in 1976 hosted the first Habitat Conference, and we're looking to host the Habitat Plus 30 in 2006. And I think that's very significant, because if we're going to invite the world to come here and look at issues of habitation, it is critically important that this city, together with the provincial government, the federal government, deal with the issues of homelessness.
Thank you.
If the city, the city can't go it alone. We get seven cents of the tax dollar, 93% of the tax go to the senior levels of government. They need to come back to the table and help us to get housing in this city. So I think it's a very important data we need to acknowledge.
Thank you very much. I would just like to acknowledge at this point, former councillor Clark, who I'm sure has come here and now realizes how nice and peaceful her days are after all. I want to thank you for your contribution over the many years, and it's good to see you here. Councillor Ladner?
Worship, I have a couple of questions. One is that during the summer, while I was the, had the honor of being the acting mayor, in your absence while you were at your ranch retreat...
That's a humble farm.
I'm sorry, the farm. I spoke to the city manager about taking some action regarding people squatting on city land, and I was assured that there would be something coming forward at the first meeting of council in September. That did not happen. I asked again, and I was told that it would happen at this meeting. It has not happened. We will now have to wait another two weeks, if indeed there is going to be some action. And I have a, I would like to take the liberty of speculating that it is not the, an issue within the city bureaucracy, but rather something to do with political pressure from somebody somewhere that says that we will not...
A point of order, your worship. I believe councillor Ladner is calling into question the integrity of this council, and I take great offense, and I'd like a ruling on that.
Integrity? Who said anything about integrity? I'm talking about somebody who has a political direction to the staff.
You're implying that there is political interference in the workings of this city in terms of your request to the city's bureaucracy, and that is what you're implying?
I don't know if I'm, you want me to engage in debate with councillor Louis here? I am talking, and I would only say that...
And, your worship, I...
I would ask that you restrain your comments, councillor Ladner, and perhaps I can help you here. There is ongoing, there is ongoing processes. I mean, this is a complicated issue, and I know you know that, but this is not being ignored by any of the city, any of the city departments.
I recognize that it is not being ignored.
And it's not coming from us.
But, and I would call it leadership rather than interference or unethical behavior. There's, there's a lack of leadership here that says...
You're now, now treading into, back into that same area.
Okay. Then I'm, I'm having your assurance that there is something going to be done about this, that there is some attention being paid to it, that the citizens who have been calling us, and I'm sure all of us, in great numbers, with petitions similar to councillor Green's petition, are going to be listened to, and their concerns are going to be addressed.
They are. I would suggest to you that there isn't 1,500 people that'll sign your petition, but it is being addressed, it's not being ignored, and this is not something that we will allow to continue in our city.
I'm reassured to hear that.
And you will be part of that process.
I'm reassured to hear that, too. I also have a question about budget procedures. We were told, the people of Vancouver were told that they would be involved in the preparation of the budget for next year. And I would like to know what plans there are for any kind of public involvement in the budget preparation for next year. I wonder if anybody could tell us that.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
What is, what are the plans for public involvement in the budget procedure for the next fiscal year for the City of Vancouver?
And a very positive meeting is that... So my mic's on there? There we go. A very positive meeting just a few days ago with senior staff. At the current point in time, same level of public involvement has always been the case in previous years, but the door is always open to any further additional recommendations that you might have, councillor Ladner, I believe. And the deputy city manager will correct me if I'm wrong. There will be a report coming to council within the next month or two that will outline and address not only your very valid question, but also the entire budget development process with the dates, with timelines, and so on. One of the things that I'm very interested in is expanding the opportunities for and increasing the amount of public input. And so if you, councillor Ladner, had any suggestions, I would certainly welcome them, and I'm sure they'd be approved in a bipartisan manner.
Thank you. We've been hearing from bar owners outside the downtown area who are, have been very adversely affected by the 4:00 AM closings. And I would wonder if anybody could tell us, perhaps the city manager would know, if in our deliberations on the effects of the 4:00 AM closing, we are taking their concerns into effect, perhaps considering extending the 4:00 AM openings to other areas as well as where they are now.
Well, since the decision was ours in the first place, I think that it will be up to us at the end of the trial period to make that decision. I also appreciate that, and I think it's something that has to be taken into consideration, but it's our decision to make.
True enough, but there is a review going on now, which I don't know whether includes their concerns. I just want to make sure that was. And finally, I have some good news for councillor Green. We already have a Vancouver song.
No way.
And join that cast, circulated to me and I think to some other members of council.
It's not official, though.
The official song declared by Mayor Harcourt, no less than Mayor Harcourt, and it's recorded, and it's on the record, and we maybe... You don't want to hear me say it.
I want to go on a point of order on this one, okay?
We, we maybe have an opportunity here to save the taxpayer some money on another exercise in culture for council, and bypass the exercise in finding a Vancouver song, because we already have one. And I suspect that any other song we chose would be equally as popular and well-known as the one that we already have. Thank you.
You know, this does limit some of the, some of the people who come before us now by finding, so I will investigate that. I actually have that CD, but I did not know it was the official one, but... So if we have no further...
Yeah, no? Hold on. Hold up.
There's a whole list? Oh, back to queue. Councillor Woodsworth?
Last week, all over the world, in fact, in 1,000 cities, people celebrated Days Without Cars, whether it was called World Car, Rural Day Without Cars, or in Europe, European Car Free Day. People were celebrating by walking more, using their bicycles, or using public transit. And I wanted a memo to staff, from staff, saying how we could, at this time next year, join cities across the world, cities like Montreal, and Ottawa, Bogota, Paris, and have a day without cars.
Thank you. Councillor Louis?
Thank you, worship. Further to councillor Woodsworth's statements about no cars, not quite, but, oh, councillor Green is back. This is a piece of information. Councillor Green earlier had asked about the possibility of creating a discount for hybrid vehicles, electrical vehicles, at our parking facilities in the city. And I'm happy to report that at our easy park facilities, in fact, that has happened as of September the 8th, and they are going to be offering a 25% discount, not only for electric and hybrid vehicles, but also car pools. So you can avail yourself of that, and that's part of... Onto another note, I'd like to remind councillor Ladner some passages of our rules of conduct. And they are, that a member must not, by words of tone, manner, speaking, or gestation, express any opinion or make any allegation that directly or indirectly reflects upon the character... the character of any person or group or persons. So I remind councillor Cad, uh, Ladner, perhaps, uh, you should reread the procedure bylaw and avail yourselves of, of that con, conduct. Lastly, I'd like to move a leave of absence for councillor Stevenson for tomorrow night for the on-civic business for, I believe, about a, an hour and a half. He, he will be joining us, but he will be late.
Thank you. I, I don't think that you, uh, if that's a public hearing, uh, you can't do it, so you have the night off.
Or you can come to all of them, no?
Yes.
Or if, if, uh, what you know, if I go for the night, uh, now, uh, can I come back and say, uh, cancel the other one?
Yeah. Yes.
So, give me the night off.
Councillor Stevenson. Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry unanimously.
Well, thanks, your worship. Um, some, now for something completely lighter. Uh, since our last council meeting, I've become a trendsetter with my new, uh, quaff, my new hairdo, as you can see, and, uh, this came off, uh, as a result of fundraising, uh, exercise for Cops for Cancer, and, um, I decided to, to let all of this come off, although it's gone a fair bit back. But, uh, obviously, this is to, to collect the money. We collected, uh, about $5,000 to $7,000, I understand, but it's not too late to either give, uh, to the Cops for Cancer Fund, um, and just, uh, write in that, uh, that you're donating as a result of having seen my hair, my new hairdo. Or, better still, you can join in, uh, councillor Louis, and, uh, this is for you, too. You can, Louis, you can join in and have your hair cut completely off. Now, I spoke, I, and raised money that way, and I spoke to the mayor, and I now will challenge the mayor, because he feels he can ra, raise the same amount of money by having his taken off, but then someone else spoke to me and said, why don't we, the entire council, men and women, be really distinctive and have our hairs cut off for cancer? So that's something to think about that, but mayor, in the meantime, a challenge.
Would it be possible to find out who Mr. Clark's barber is? And, uh, if we could get the name of your barber, perhaps? Okay.
It's Mr. Ross Green Turbot.
Councillor Sullivan.
Yes, I received a number of, uh, complaints from, uh, business owners in the area of Third and Pine about a new building that is being built there, and, uh, I think they need to get some clarification on how that building was approved, and, uh, I think a little memo from staff would be nice. It is quite a, a different building, and I think it needs to be looked at.
What kind of building is it?
It's a four-story slab. There are no windows, no detailing. It's right across from some very funky architectural and, uh, artistic places, and it just seemed quite out of character, and I think it needs to be, we need to look at that.
City manager? Uh, seeing no further items, uh, we will adjourn, uh, to the in-camera.